Good morning, everybody. Thanks for coming to the Commissioner meeting. Let's get started off here with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we've approved the minutes from February 17th. Approved accounts payable vouchers and approved payroll dockets. I make a motion to approve the minutes, vouchers, and the dockets.
I second that.
Any other questions, comments? If not, on paper, say aye.
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 Okay. Assessor. And accretes proposal for the ortho imagery.
Ready for me?
Ready?
Okay, I'll make it short and sweet.
No, no.
No? Okay, fine, I'll read the whole thing now.
We like it. Okay, wait a minute. Thank you, Cottie, for surprise.
Alrighty, this was just an upgrade to the imagery that the state does every three to four years, depending on when they do the flyover. We have all the money already ready to pay this. There was actually $956.24 was paid by the state for the upgrade of the flyover. David Sutter put 1,500 towards it and Brian Jackson with the city put 1,500 towards the total, and then we had the money for the rest. So this is the flyover that they do every three to four years. Anyway, we just decided to, we wanted to do the upgrade of the imagery from nine inch out in the county to six inch, which will give us much better pictures. And then six inch to three inch in city limits of Hanover and Madison.
Give us more detail?
Yeah, and every, I think almost every office in the county probably uses the GIS mapping and the city, so, along with the public.
It's a porto, I'm thinking, wow, it says teeth image, what's that? Wow, this is getting up close and personal. People just turn over and smile. No. So I move, we accept the proposal for the ortho imagery upgrade, six inch in the county, three inches in Madison and Hanover. For county's cost is $8,692.92.
I second that move. Any more questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. You were short.
Wow.
Yeah.
Don't you like it to be short?
Are you, you're gonna be the one to sign the...
Thanks, guys.
Amanda?
What, I'm sorry?
Do we need to sign, or do you sign this, or...
Um, I can, or...
Yeah.
However...
I just didn't know how you wanted it, because we could, obviously, but if you...
No, I'm fine with you guys. It's fine, it's fine with me. Thank you.
And GIS limited use agreement between Jefferson County and Visit Madison for River Town Review.
Similar to what we've done with the others, but just being able to share the GIS information with, so this is the, oh, what's called the Ohio River Trail that was, you've seen the emails every once in a while, but they're gonna try to enhance things inside Jefferson County by having access to the GIS system and being able to kind of promote that as part of the trail going, I think it starts from Cincinnati and goes all the way to Louisville. So just sharing our GIS information with them to...
Tie it all together.
Mm-hmm.
It's gonna help cultural tourism information. I don't see anything to benefit us.
Yep. I move, we accept the GIS limited use agreement between Jefferson County and Visit Madison with being used for the River Town Review Ohio Recreational Trail.
I will second that motion. Any more questions or comments? If not, all those in paper say aye.
Aye.
All right. Wow. Anybody over here, who's up first?
Bobby's the only one.
I'm ready when you are.
Come on over. Please.
Yeah, we've been busy. I'll try not to stub Bobby's toe here. Thanks, I know we did get the signature signed for the contracts. It's been delivered for the local paving for the CCMG, should you say, the CCMG paving contract was delivered to O'Meara's and that's on file. We've got the signatures here for the local paving agreement with All-Star Paving, so I'll get those delivered today, so we've got that all done. Some of the items that I want to make sure everybody's aware of that we've been working on, I know the dough run structure, we had our kickoff meeting for that this week, that is scheduled to start April the 1st. The biggest hiccup or challenge that I can foresee that could push that back is gonna be getting a phone line moved off of that structure and our communications with Frontier. We started that back in November and that might have, should have started two years ago.
Did you know?
I think we'll get all that worked out.
Did you know that yet?
The pun's gonna be water under the bridge, but...
That'll work out.
Well, yeah, that doesn't always go over real well either.
And to get letters after those.
Yep, yep. The request for funding, all the paperwork has been submitted to Endot for the CCMG projects that's coming, so that all had to be turned in after we had the contract with O'Meara's and all that stuff was in place. The request for funding for the engineering side for Bridge 107 was submitted here this past week. That bridge is scheduled, as we've kind of mentioned before, for 2026, so this is just lots of the formalities and things that go before that. Several people have already reached out to us there at the Highway Department. We did put out a road closure notice for Brooksburg-Manville Road as we're gonna be replacing three culverts on that road. We're gonna try to keep those limited to daily road closures, so everything can have access early morning and in the evenings. Some of those may be a little bit narrow and a little bit tight, just kind of depending on how construction goes on those. We have been working with the school, because there is a school bus that runs that, and it's a little bit, quite a bit of inconvenience for them to get around if that has to stay closed for very long, so we're optimistic to say the best, that we're trying to make all the preparations, plans if we can, and have the communications open to them. We're still fixing a lot of roads, as everybody can imagine, with the freezing and thawing that creates lots of those wonderful potholes, cleaning out a lot of debris out of the road ditches and out of the road itself, for that matter, you know, with the storm events that we had here the last couple of weeks. Unfortunately, we can't just wave our magic wand and have all those done in a day or two, that would be nice, but it's just not reality. I know, I'm used to things being very seasonal on the farm, and a lot of those same seasons kind of happen with the Highway Department, as far as when you can be in full-blown construction season and when you're battling snow and other elements and when you'd like to be doing things, but the weather doesn't cooperate. I know it's been a challenge this winter. We've been fortunate that we haven't had an excessive amount of snow and ice, but it would be nice for a couple of days when you could go out and be getting some of the roads prepped and be putting some culverts in, do some ditching, but then you gotta pull everything off to get ready for a possible snow event. We have to be ready for those, so that definitely prolongs all the construction season. The flooding did have a couple of roads close. It did finally get up high enough that it, our first point is always down on River Bottom Road, between 10th and Road and Prospect, that's kind of our lowest elevation in the road floods, there's not a lot of traffic that goes through there and they can all have an alternate way out. The next one that usually catches us is our bridge down at the bottom of Slita Hill, and it did get over top of that one there for a few days. Looking at the last river level that I had sent to me, it looks like it's, all those should be completely off the roadways now, so we're checking those this morning, make sure that the debris's off of those roads and if they're open. The next one, it's usually our critical point, I know Troy works with them a lot, whenever it gets close to closing that access road to Hanover Beach and getting the folks in and out down there, so, and I know they're always in very good communications. As far as the GIS, when she was talking about that update, yeah, that's something that we use a lot, so, that all those updates and upgrades are greatly appreciated, so, yeah, we're just, that's kind of the Reader's Digest condensed version of a lot of the projects we've had going on, and I know the crews have been out and been doing a really good job and sending a lot of the follow-ups and getting several phone calls of folks that were glad to see us show up, so, those we always keep posted. Do you guys have any comments or questions for me?
No.
And I will bring up the one, I did get the email and the concerns that have been kind of recorded for Lost Fork. I know you and I took a little road trip and go up through there, and we realized that our part of the road's not necessarily as challenging as some of the Switzerland County end. Those unofficial detours aren't really something that we can kind of pick, choose, and change. There have been some that I've been able to tweak in the past, if there are some other alternatives. There's not really anything close. I think a lot of the folks will find other ways around for Endot and the contract that we've already signed with them, and I am kind of looking into that because I think there's some additional signage and stuff that we might be able to request from Endot to help put up and help us to kind of watch and navigate that, to keep that, as few challenges as possible is about the best way I can possibly work on that.
I mean, they'll put up their normal detour signs, right? Which will take them, not the unofficial one, but the official one?
Correct, that is correct. Yeah, the unofficial detours are always, there's no detour signs for those.
People gotta find them.
I know Ripley County did put up some local detour signs for some of theirs, just because they were having so much traffic coming off of 421 that was causing them so much issues, and I don't know if they put those up themselves or if they had Endot come down and help kind of navigate with some of those signs, but I have already started some of that communication. I continue to work for Switzerland County's superintendent also.
Okay.
On that one, almost forgot that I didn't. That's why I try to make notes, I don't forget too many things. Thanks very much, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Troy.
Good morning.
Morning, sir.
I don't have a whole lot. The, or the EJ?
Stuck right on his foot.
Bobby's getting bobbed.
Well, we gotta take care of our meeting. Here's the court out. Well, the river's going in the right direction. With the rain is supposed to hold off, I think, until Sunday or Monday. Supposed to get a couple, three more inches, I think, first part of next week, so we'll see how that holds out. Bobby's debris might come back up on the, on the roads and the bridges before the end of next week again, but we've got our eye on that. We continue to work with Burke Engineering on the multi-hazard mitigation plan. We're about six weeks into that, and it's going well. Still got several months to go, but it's moving in the right direction. March 15th is the statewide cybersecurity workshop. Send emails out to everybody about that, but elected officials and IT folks should be very interested in that. I was honored to serve on the planning committee for that. Jefferson County is not presenting as part of that workshop, but we had a lot of input as far as what the content of that workshop's gonna be, so I think it's gonna be interesting and informative, so if you're inclined or you have the time, it's a little, it'll be a little lengthy, I think, it's about four hours, but it's virtual, it's online, but there's gonna be a lot of good information, so I encourage all the elected officials and any of the IT folks that want to participate in that to do so, so...
What day of the week is that?
I don't remember, it's next week.
It's Tuesday.
Yeah, somewhere along, it's the 15th, whatever that is.
That's really cool.
Yeah, that's cool. Yeah, I think you did respond with that, yeah. Anyway, but that should be a good program as well. Now, we're just trying to keep lid on things. Any questions or...
Keep the lid on?
Yeah. Sometimes you gotta sit on it, sometimes you gotta throw yourself on it, just do what you gotta do. Any questions for me?
The grenade.
Exactly, yes, the store, the grenade, or the lid. I prefer the lid myself, so. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Troy, what you do.
Got anything, Mr. Dave?
No, sir.
No?
Good right now, any questions?
Questions for Mr. Dave? Nope. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. I guess that's it for all these guys. Public, anybody out here have a question, something? Terry? I didn't think you just showed up for accident.
Why, thank you for coming.
Yeah.
I wanna know what the plan is for paving in the county. I've talked to Bobby several times about 9:25, and you've driven the road. This plan, we all let go back to the bucket, it's a mess.
No, I had a phone call on that one this week also, so. There is a plan for it, it just, it hasn't made it to the top of the plan yet, but we're still making some progress, there's some roadway challenges up there that I'm kind of working on also.
But I know we've talked about it the last couple, three years.
Yes, we have, it's been...
They haven't been paved. It's been at least 50 years since it's paved, and I know there's a lot of roads in the county other places that are gonna be paved two or three times, I'd say. I know there's not, it's not a high-volume traffic, but it's, you know, it is, it is more than that.
Where were...
Just don't forget about it.
I'm not forgetting, that's fair.
That's all I got.
Hello, I see her.
You might wanna remind everyone about the email I sent you guys on that grant that we got awarded.
Yeah, the one for our coordinator, I guess?
Yes.
For our residential treatment...
Right.
Committee organizer, coordinator, grant that Amber Finnegan got. That's 160.
Well, I can't remember exactly what I sent you in that email, but I do know that there were 21 different programs that were funded throughout the state, we're part of those 21. They're going to send me, you know, a contract, once that contract gets sent to me, then I'll send that contract to the attorney, make sure he reads through it, then they'll give us a, some more details on what I'll have to communicate with Heather, that way she's aware of what's coming in and when it's coming in, and she's created some more organization in her office that's fantastic, that way things are just searchable and more organized, so...
I think it's for 18 months, wasn't that it?
I believe so.
I mean, linked term was, so, and I think that'll...
Yeah, the term of the grant is March 1st of this year through June 30th of 2023.
A little bit longer than, I guess, maybe they've given us some time to hire someone or something in there, so...
Right, right, and it'll all come at once, that way J-Rac has the flexibility to do what they need to do.
Sure, and I think the other, the treatment train committee will get some help from that too, having someone full-time to be able to kind of evaluate those, kind of narrow down the options and...
I know that that full-time person will be responsible for, you know, their coordination, and also part of the terms of the grant is that there'll be monthly reports.
Accountability, yep.
Yeah.
Yep, sounds good. Appreciate Amber getting that done and...
Yeah, she wrote up a great grant.
Heather? I don't really have anything. I guess projects going on in our office is, we are working on a new way to track grants in our office, so that we have that information available to us a little faster, since the audit, we noticed it was a shortfall, so we are trying to make that better, and I am working with the county attorney on a new ordinance for fixed asset management as well, so I'll be bringing that soon to you guys.
Yep, got something that...
We need to work on, so something that he has asked me about right now, I've sent him a couple examples from other counties, but we need to decide what our threshold is going to be here, and if we're gonna have a tiered threshold as far as tracking our assets. Right now, we just have $5,000 across the board, so that's kind of...
A lot of things slip through at 5,000.
There are things, right, there are probably things that should have lower thresholds and some things that should have higher thresholds, so we need to assess that.
Computer equipment probably lower and building assets maybe higher, so...
Right, vehicle and equipment assets at 5,000, I don't, I don't really know what that would, I think it probably needs to be a little higher, but, so...
Yeah.
Which I can include you guys on that email as well, to try to get those tiers developed.
Yeah, I think we, it just, it, I mean, I think at face value, it looks very big, but if you do that tiered, you're probably gonna have to adjust it as you, as you learn and...
So, we have a program that is already available to us, that is part of another agreement that we're in with Data Pit Stop, and everyone will be able, after we update our ordinance, everyone, like someone from every office will be able to actually log in and track, and they'll actually do the depreciation, everything on that. It'll take a lot of timely work off of everyone.
Yeah, oh, yeah, upfront work, but, but, so...
It will be nice, once we get guidance as to what limits we need to do.
Yeah, and that'll help us plan, things that we need to...
And he has offered to come down and do training with all the department heads on doing that too. Darren Bates from Data Pit Stop, he does our BMV exercise program.
Sounds like a good deal.
A lot of that from the insurance, couldn't we?
Well, I think the list of things, there may be things in there, but, you know, computer equipment, furniture...
Right.
Depending on where you wanna set those tiers, probably not in the insurance, though, the things that you probably still need to keep track of, I mean, we're gonna go through a fairly substantial chunk for computer equipment, but an asset, an asset plan would have, would have helped us there.
Yeah.
And kind of plan out how we're gonna do that, instead of getting to a point where, yeah, Windows 7 is probably not a good idea, so...
More work, but if it keeps the state happy, right?
Yeah, we are...
Well, I mean, it just, yeah, that, it just, it makes sense, though, I mean, it's something that, you know, it, once again, it's a very large thing to get your hands on, but it helps us plan for, plan for the future, so...
Bobby?
I really don't have anything.
Room's about done.
That's one thing I need to do, is check, I need more insurance since we did that.
Oh, yeah.
I looked at space with him today.
Okay.
Just in case. Looking very good, should be done hopefully today or tomorrow, Monday. Anything, Dave?
Sure, so, we awarded that contract last meeting with William Siegfried and, no, Taylor, Taylor Siegfried and Williams on the updating of the zoning and the subdivision ordinances. We're gonna meet next, the 14th, just to kind of do a kickoff meeting, get things organized and get some, they call it a technical committee, people who use those ordinances very regularly and start looking at areas we know that need to be updated right away and how we're just working through that, but getting started. Also gonna look at kind of the first, I don't say the first phase, but first part we're gonna look at is a solar ordinance, because of all the things that are going on and knowing that right now, we, you know, the Plan Commission uses it as a structure, so we've got guidelines for that, but, you know, the state's got a lot of things on their mind about solar, so trying to, I don't wanna say protect ourselves, but get it set up ahead of time rather than reacting when these things start coming through. And we've heard in some cases that people who are investigating putting in solar don't feel that they're, since it's not specifically mentioned in ordinance, they don't really need to come and talk about it, so we wanna say, yeah, here it is. So, that, had some discussions with Andrew Lannan, we should be getting kind of his, his plan for lost revenue, but he said here recently, I mean, they did it in January, but I think they may have finalized it a little bit more, the federal government, that is who they are, on if you got less than $10 million in your ARP funds, you have a lot of leeway as far as what you can consider as lost revenue or not. So I think that allows us to, to look at, kind of finalize our plan for how we wanna spend that, we have some leeway and things where we can move that. You know, Heather's been working on some tiered for premium pay, so I'm gonna go back, but we'll get back and we can, we can talk about that today if you have a little bit of time and just try to, try to get that set up. So those pieces are coming together, and I think we'll be able to finalize the plan here, hopefully this month, maybe early next month, and then move forward. I did ask, you know, we'd heard some things at the Commissioner meeting in December about not being too sure that the second part was coming, but our representative from Barnes and Thordenberg said, I haven't heard any of that, and I would make plans that it's coming. So, I think, you know, there's some, so that, rather than just worrying about 3.1 billion, it's gonna be 6.2 billion that we have to set up. You know, there's been something here recently on the federal level about national mental health crisis, but it looks like there's some more funding out there for mental health treatment, and I think those are, that and some kind of economic development planning we can do with some of this ARP money, so looking at, at that, looking at maybe some infrastructure requirements in parts of the county that don't have it right now, namely sewer systems and things like that, is a regional sewer district something we wanna look at or not, but kind of starting those conversations. We've had a little bit of discussions on airport planning for JPG, we're gonna have another meeting today with the guys that kind of have floated a draft plan, just talk a little bit more about that and see what, what do it take to at least evaluate it, is it even an option? And I have, we have had some conversations with the owner, he's interested, he's got some other things on his plate too about that, so, but that's fine. I think it's still worth finding out if it's even, even a possibility. If it's not a possibility, let's not waste their time, but let's, it's gonna take a little bit of effort to figure out if it is a possibility or not, I think, mainly some discussions with FAA folks, and that may take a little time, so...
So that conversation's up in the air.
Well, yeah.
Three years down the road.
Trying to land it somewhere. You've been working all night, you came up with one, that's good.
That's all I had.
That's all I have.
So, that's it, everybody. So, next residential treatment meeting is next Commissioner meeting, which is, what, 17th? Is that right, Troy? Let me look here. Yeah, 17th.
Good answer, Troy.
Yeah, it's the next residential treatment committee meeting, it'll be up at the JCPC.
Yes.
Yes, up there with Mr. Troy, and the Commissioner meeting will be following right there across the hall or the room adjoining.
Next door.
Next door. That meeting starts at 4:00. And we get to talk about some new things this time with the grant, and J-Rac gets to talk about new things too, yeah. And you have a federal government, what was that, 700 million?
Yep.
For mental health crisis. So, yep. A lot of... Lot of money coming down the road for this, this little behind, but we're, we're starting on it, trying to get caught up. Tara, anything from you, ma'am? Aw, man.
Website?
Yeah, still working with Civic Plus Two, um, freshen up our county website, just change the images, change the colors, things like that, and then, um, working with Ovation and to update our I.T. stuff, so...
Yep, you have. All right.
I move we adjourn.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Everybody out there, say aye.
Thank you for coming.